Columbus, Georgia, this is your city council. Mayor Skip Henderson, city manager Isaiah Hughley, Pops Barnes, District One, Glenn Davis, District Two, Bruce Huff, District Three, Toya Tucker, District Four, Charmaine Crabbe, District Five, Gary Allen, Mayor Pro Tem and District Six,
Joanne Kogle, District Seven,
Walker Garrett, District Eight, Judy Thomas, Post Nine at Large Counselor,
Tyson Begley, Post Ten at Large Counselor,
Sandra Davis, Clerk of Council, and City Attorney Clifton Fay. Columbus, Georgia, this is your city council.
To the December 5th city council meeting, hope everybody had a great Thanksgiving. It's hard to believe it's already December, but it's rolling right along. We always begin our meetings with a prayer. And before I invite Grace Burton Edwards to the podium, just want to ask that everybody keep the family of former Assistant Chief Gil Sluchek in your prayers and in your thoughts. He passed away this past weekend, and we certainly appreciate all he did for the city of Columbus. But I will invite Grace Burton Edwards to the podium. She is with Saint Thomas Episcopal and a very good friend of the city. Thank you, Grace.
Good morning. I apologize for my voice. I tend to lose it every year in December when the seasons change, which is not great timing, so please bear with me. I'll be brief. As city leaders, often you are charged with leading our community in times of disagreement. People of wisdom and well intentions often have different ideas about the right direction to go, and your job is to navigate that path for all of us, and so we are so grateful for your leadership. In that spirit, I want to offer a prayer from my tradition, the Book of Common Prayer from the Episcopal Church, and the title is "In Times of Conflict." It's a prayer that's very useful in the life of the church, but I think it's also useful in the life of our cities, so let us pray. Oh God, you have bound us together in a common life. Help us in the midst of our struggles for justice and truth, to confront one another without hatred or bitterness, and to work together with mutual forbearance and respect for the sake of your love. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you all.
Grace, thank you so much, and as always, your words are so timely. We appreciate that very much. And this group sitting around this table does a fantastic job, and they work very hard at trying to continue to move the city forward. And we understand that sometimes that doesn't align with every one of the 207,000 residents' vision. So we ask, as always, once in this court or this room, almost said it again, once in this room, we ask that everybody be respectful of those that are speaking that may have a different idea than you do, and our Christmas elves, our sheriff's deputies are here to make sure that there are no outbursts, so we'll move forward. If you would, please stand and join me in a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Counselor Thomas?
Mr. Mayor, before we move on the agenda, as you have said, and I think everybody in the room knows, that we lost our retired Assistant Chief Gil Sluchek this last weekend. He was on the Columbus Police Department for 44 years. And anybody that you mention his name to has only good things to say about him. You may notice that around the table, all of the counselors have on a blue ribbon today in honor of Gil. And we would like, as a council, to stand and have a moment of silence in Gil's honor. Thank you.
Holidays are always a time of festivity, but it's also very difficult to some families who have lost loved ones. I know we've had two other well-known individuals in our community. Lamar Beck has passed away recently. He's been a tremendous friend of the city. He's donating land for public safety structures. And also Shelby Amos, who has, he and his wife, I know, own the Cotton Mouse in addition to trying to do a lot of good things for this community. So we just ask you to, when you know of a neighbor that has lost a loved one, give them a hug, because the holidays aren't always quite as festive for some. Thank you, counsel. I also want to mention, we are privileged to have in our chambers today some distinguished visitors from Spencer High School. So we'd like them to stand, let us welcome them with a round of applause. Would you stand, please? You know, I got to tell you, we went to the Foreigner Concert, my wife and I did, and when they did one of their big hits, that you have to be over 50 to remember, the Spencer High School chorus came out in their robes and walked up on stage and backed up the band, one of the coolest things. I've got about a 10-second video, because I'm on slow work and technology, but we did get some of that. I'll try to send that to the school so you guys can see it. Great job, great job. All right, first, we'll, yes, I'm sorry, Counsel, Mr. Hughley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, let me just say that I didn't know the Assistant Chief and worked with him for many years. He was a great guy, and I would love to wear a ribbon. I just don't know where you all got those from, but I would wear one if I had one. Thank you. And the other thing is, of course, I'm an alum of Spencer High School, and I see that they are here, and it's good to see them. I didn't know they were going to be here, but I see Principal Rosa Patterson, and I had the honor of being honored last week as a legend of Spencer High School, and I want to extend my appreciation to her and to all of the faculty, staff, and students at Spencer High School for bestowing that honor upon me.
Congratulations, legend. That's pretty good. I'm legend in my own mind sometimes, but that's about as far as I get. Principal Patterson, thank you, ma'am, for bringing these young people to the chambers. All right, we'll move forward with the minutes from November 14th council meeting. Motion second to approve. Any discussion, any edits? Are hearing none, all in favor, say aye. All right, any opposed? Minutes are approved. All right, and next, we've got a presentation of the internal audit of the Finance Department, presented by our auditor, Ms. McGinnis.
The audit was authorized by our city council on July 25th of 2023. The audit process included the authorization of the audit, the development of the audit program, the entrance conference with the auditee, and the conduct of field work. Additionally, there was preparation of a draft audit report, exit conference remotely with the auditee, the auditee's response, the preparation of the final audit report, and the presentation to city council. In terms of scope, we looked at the organizational structure of the Finance Department. We looked at operations. We looked at financial position, employee verification and position description review, administrative and financial operations. Payroll testing occurred with no discrepancies noted. Advantage budgetary reporting was reviewed for the most recently completed three fiscal years with overruns associated with software leases, membership dues and fees, office supplies, publication subscriptions, operating materials, mobile phones, contractual services, postage and copier charges. Site visits provided an opportunity to observe the customer service activity in the revenue division. Delinquency reporting, accounts receivable, and lockbox reporting were also obtained. As the department was busy with external audit activities, we conducted brief interviews with full-time departmental employees as an alternative to a department-wide SWAT exercise. We sought input on proud achievements, strengths in their work area, wishes for the workplace in the year ahead, as well as any known concerns. The team provided a lot of meaningful input. Trained departmental financial issues continue to frequently turn in items to purchasing that need further action and are missing key approvals, bogging down activity with a reckoning at fiscal year-end. That finding, of course, we found in procurement. The issuance of 1098 forms to vendors at calendar year-end diverts activity for two buyers from the purchasing team annually for several months. This is a process that can be complicated by voided checks versus council checks or credit issuance. The volume of business activity in the purchasing division has dramatically increased in recent years without an adjustment to the staffing roster. Statistical review and comparison to similar sister cities supports an adjustment. Yes?
Form 1098 is?
Form 1098 would be issued by the end of the year, representing, for instance, someone who has been doing business with a company with a grant possibly completed years on their account.
It's a tax item. It's 1098 that the parties need to receive from our government because we conducted business with them.
Thank you.
Unprocessed transactional activity in the revenue division totaling $45.1 million has been identified at the account level as of 10/28/23. Backlog activity has been catalogued in Excel records known as the CCG lockbox with related checks and credit card authorizations unbanked. Dollars represent an unrealized revenue liability in the year received. We do not have an allowance for these transactions. The revenue division handles a wide variety of taxes and permit fees. In years past, renewal notices were routinely sent. More recently, such mailings no longer occur. Write-offs of old-age DMS receivables along with two legally deficient loans have not been permitted for years.
Let's begin, excuse me just a second. City manager has a question.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, just a question of clarification.
Yes.
I googled 1098, and it says it's a mortgage interest statement to report mortgage interest, including points defined later and so forth.
Well, they're issuing 1098s versus 1099s. They're issuing 1098s, is what they're issuing.
For mortgage?
Possibly related to community reinvestment. You know, we've had loans out there to individuals. They're issuing 1098s, is what they're doing.
Okay, continue.
Write-offs of old-age DMS receivables along with two legally deficient loans have not been permitted for years. There is an allowance established in the general fund, though accounts receivable remains overstated, and the allowance may not currently be at an adequate level. Several months ago, the collections team within the revenue division had been addressing a backlog in EMS billing. It's terrific to find them caught up currently to current workflow. Within the revenue division, truly delinquent business accounts are currently difficult to identify. Thus, citation enforcement via inspection codes has been largely discontinued. Now, I would add to this, though. We looked at a five-year period. We looked from fiscal 2019 to fiscal 23. In recent months, we have seen, you know, a good bit of special enforcement activity in recent months. But across the five-year period, we did not see a great deal of that taking place. Within the accounting division, both CGI payroll and advantage systems go through three to four mini conversions annually that effectively turn the workplace into a test site where our team is identifying system glitches for the software manufacturer, which disrupts the routine workflow. Within the accounting division, trained departmental financial managers continue to frequently turn in items for accounts payable or payroll action that are incomplete or missing key approvals, bogging down activity. Every effort is made to produce completely accurate payroll results regardless of the timeliness or the quality of the submissions. Within the accounting division, special asset reporting may not always be current as new acquisitions and auction disposals may not be recorded for several months in the run-up to the year-end external process, audit process. Within the accounting division, adjusting entries are posted to revenue accounts at fiscal year-end before the external auditor arrival to sweep liability balances associated with the unprocessed licensing backlog for the fiscal year. Within the administration, there is an inconsistent policy enforcement of a five consecutive-day leave rule for finance employees, with some complying and others not required. Within the administration, there are several key employees who are likely to retire in the coming months and years, and there is a need for a developed succession plan. Looking ahead at the recommendations, recommend the addition of one full-time buyer technician in the purchasing division to address increased volume of activity, as well as that 1098 production. Recommend accounts payable participation in the 1098 process, ensuring a smoother processing cycle annually. Recommend researching public sector ERP systems, seeking providers that are not constantly in development. Recommend amending the W-2 document format to include all frequently sought information, thus eliminating the need for customized payroll letters for employees, one of the things that we saw in field work. Frequently, when an employee is making a significant purchase, they're financing a mortgage, you know, they're qualifying for a mortgage, they're purchasing a car. This is not the average, you know, credit card, you know, application. When they have a significant personal transaction, they may need information that is not routinely contained on their W-2. So we have a lot of custom letters being prepared to assist and support employees. And it's worthy, and, you know, it's a five-star service that we do that, but there's a manual effort associated with that. Recommend that revenue division results stand at fiscal year-end, and if a liability does exist, report it, resulting in accurate financial reporting. Recommend the development of an action plan to address backlog transactions regarding occupational taxes and other fees. Recommend that renewal notices be sent out to licensed businesses annually. Recommend that inspection and codes resume citation enforcement, and we have seen some of that recently, as appropriate for known delinquent accounts. Recommend that write-offs of aged EMS receivables and other uncollectibles take place, ensuring more accurate financial reporting. Angelica Alexander, Finance Director, had been provided with a draft and has provided an auditee's response on November 29th of 2023. Her response is provided with your report material. Do we have any questions at this point? I realize it's rather detailed. I would share with you the supplemental material that you see in your binders today. The message from us, an internal audit, from Troutman Pepper, who we worked alongside of, the five whistleblowers that we worked with, one of which came through anonymously through our brand-new Lighthouse service. You know, this was a collaboration, and we don't throw out difficult, challenging numbers, things that are hard, maybe. We don't throw that out without doing our homework. And we wanted to be able to show examples, what we know, and particularly in terms of the backlog, understand that this is a One Columbus type of moment. There is no neighborhood that is left out. Everyone, it touches every district, it touches every neighborhood. And the intent in providing DBA level simply was to share with you, you know, information that allows a counselor to be responsive to those frequent frustrated contacts you've received recently from business owners. Those are your constituents, and, you know, responsive government is always going to be, you know, a meaningful thing, to just realize that it touches all of us. It didn't leave anyone behind. Do we have any questions? If you should have questions after the fact, I realize it's rather detailed.
Counselor Tucker?
Please reach out to us.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. I know that this was a lot of work, and you can see here, just in its detailed report, how much work went in this audit. One of the things, when I read the presentation, I thought about the everyday person that may not understand exactly the wording. So one of the things that I would like to possibly break down is what's unprocessed transactional activity in the revenue division totaling $45.1 million? What does that entail? What does that include? What does that mean? How does that look? How do I communicate that if someone asks me, "Well, Toya, what does unprocessed transactional activity actually include?"
Well, I can break it down for you a bit. The lion's share of the activity comes from items that were mailed in. We have customers, obviously, that come in in person, and they tended to receive more complete transactions on a regular basis. So you're dealing with mail that, due to maybe some staffing issues, due to the circumstances at play, you have a situation in which what came in in the mail got set aside over a period of time. Now, what you see in that mail, the bulk of it, when we talk about dollars, and you see we didn't disclose social security numbers, tax IDs, you know, we don't have gross revenue in there. But what we are talking about here is attempts, you know, our rules tell us that if you're a business in town, we require you to prominently display your valid permit or business license. That's what we expect of you. And we have folks that obviously have tried to participate in that, and they've been frustrated. We have checks that have never made it to the bank, lots of stale-dated checks. At the 91st day, a check is stale. It is not eligible for deposit at that point. There had been some attempts here and there, folks lapping and trying to come back with, "Would you please take my check this time?" You know, there's some evidence of that. Sometimes it works, sometimes it does not work. But the bulk of the items are of that nature where they've not yet received. The business would love to comply. They're not truly delinquent. They would love to comply and display a valid license on their wall prominently, as we expected them. They'd love to do that, but they don't have a complete transaction. So the bulk of them are stale checks. You also have written credit card authorization instructions in some cases, because you're not just talking about alcohol licenses in restaurants necessarily. You're talking about pawn shop permits. You're talking about package store. Wide variety, you've got funeral homes, you name it. We have everyone in here. Hotel occupancy taxes in here. So you have situations where someone might provide you with a written credit card authorization form with instructions, "Please, you know, charge my credit card." And it's not like they're present and we're going to stick the chip into a machine or something. They've mailed this in, so someone needed to sit down and key in that transaction. So that's a portion of these items, of course. And then, to a much lesser extent, I mean, it's small in number. You may have a few in which the payment had been processed, but the license had not yet been, you know, issued for some reason. Or you may have a situation where the license has been issued and the payment has not yet been processed. But those are certainly the minority of the situations. So the bulk of it is going to be your stale-dated checks and items that, maybe there's been an attempt to replace the item, perhaps not so much. And then you also have the written credit card authorizations.
Is there something stating officially that a check is still dated after 91 days?
Well, I know the banking standard, and I simply say that because I'm in a banking family, but standard is typically 90 days, and it's invalid on the 91st day. But we could go back to the Comptroller of the Currency, we could go to the FDIC, we could go back to, you know, State Banking Commission, you know, we can go back and provide the guidance that tells us this.
So would it be wrong if we, say for instance, because you said that this was a five-year, I guess, research?
That was a five years of research, yes.
So in 2019, say for instance, you found checks from 2019, would those checks be null and void as of today?
Today, they would be, yes, yes.
And I know you put a lot of information within this report.
Right.
And you gave us some recommendations. What would you say, as a council, trying to go back and recoup those funds from 2019, and I say up to 2022, is it feasible to try to go out and get those dollars in a good faith, you know, process or procedure? Or is it something that, you know, shame on us as the city of Columbus, and something such as what we did with our tax commissioner, where we voided those taxes out for that year because it was an error on our part? Is that something that you would see like, this is just a loss? Like a $45.1 million loss that we will never recoup?
Well, it's not quite that simple. Obviously, I'm leaning into your leadership. I will share with you that of these sums, in some cases, businesses over a period of time have left town, businesses have failed, the business owners have passed away, they're in a local cemetery and the estate has been settled. In those cases, there isn't going to be a collection. But that is not 100% of what we see here. The other thing that I think we don't want to lose sight of is that we do have citizens that, in fact, have come in in person, and maybe if it took more than one day, it came back two or three days in a row, but they proved their point, they established their relationships, they got their canceled check, they have their valid permit or license, and it's proudly displayed. They've completed the process. And I don't know what we think about the optics for those folks if we simply say, "Well, you know, it's very nice that you completed the process, but all of these people have had various problems, so somehow, you know, everyone gets, you know, amnesty for life or whatever." I don't know what message we send to the folks that diligently showed up in person and shook the hands and walked the walk until they made it happen. So I think we want to be careful about the message. The only ones that are truly losses are businesses that have, you know, left town, closed shop, folks have passed away. Those are situations where we're not going to have much choice. You know, the intent was simply to show that there's some honest homework that was done here, out of care and concern, to give you all the tools to be responsive. You know, there's no easy solution because we have folks that have successfully sort of slated. They got it done. Now, the software itself, throughout the state of Georgia, people are using the software and maybe not using it exactly the way we are, but maybe they don't have the same situation, the same dynamics. We have also, in the midst of all this, had an explosion of brand-new businesses. You know, we've had new businesses. It's the backside of economic development. So the numbers, the volume and demand probably hasn't met the FTE count in that area. So that's a reckoning as well, you know? But when we look at it, it's just not quite that simple. Now, I know there's been talk about, you know, that COVID somewhat disrupted things. And of course, it led to the adjusting of some deadlines or the extension of the process. We're going to permit additional months for someone to complete the process. And I'm sure that creates additional stress points. But when we looked at by year within the five years, 2020, fiscal 2020, was actually a bright spot. The unprocessed work is rather fluid. When we first saw high-level reporting through whistleblowers, we didn't get there alone. We got there with Troutman Pepper and whistleblowers. We didn't get there alone. But when we looked at the five years at a summary level and at, like, basically July 28th, we were looking at, you know, $46 million. And roughly about two months later, we'd seen an improvement of about $880,000, where matters had been resolved. So it's fluid. Now, clearly, we're no longer seeing a fluid 23. We're working on, you know, a lockbox for 24 at this point. But these numbers are not static. They do change, and there's opportunity for improvement over time. It's not going to, it's not going to be a simple solution, I don't believe, because we do have folks that live and serve our community in a business role that have slated, you know, that they got there. And I don't know what message we send to them if everyone gets a pass. I'm not sure about that. And I just say that kind of from the heart. I mean, there are going to be folks, you know, the businesses that left and the folks that have passed away, well, you know, that's a lost moment, you know? But it's going to need... But it's it's going to need leadership, it's going to need some thoughtful, you know, approach. I I really just wanted to bring facts and reality and the degree of effort. And this was a product of collaboration. We didn't get there by ourselves. I mean, your audit team worked hard, but we worked in conjunction with Troutman Pepper. We also worked with whistleblowers that that stepped forward. And and they made a difference because they wanted to help us understand, you know, where we had opportunities to sincerely improve. And, you know, that's where we're at.
I I think it would be good also, and I know we didn't see it in the presentation, but you said that in twenty twenty, it was a better, I guess, year of collection.
Right, there was only about three point seven million that was backlog. And one of the things that occurred in twenty twenty, the nature of of that moment, we had restricted some of our public buildings and and we didn't have a lot of customer contact live. It was pretty much a a mailing-in type of situation. But the employees that are employed in the revenue division, due to the nature of their work, were considered essential employees, and they were on the job. So they probably had a little less face-to-face distraction, a little less, you know, who's bringing a a problem to my desk this moment? So they probably had less interrupted time to to maybe focus on the mail that had come in. You know, so by comparison, you know, we had had a larger backlog the previous year, and it has, it's grown a good bit, and we have a growth trend at the moment. And I do think that some of what we see in the growth trend is a reflection of the fact that we're growing businesses. And and that's nothing to be ashamed of, we're growing businesses.
Yeah, so one of the things I know far as questions I receive from some of my constituents is the breakdown per year. So what was not the unprocessed transactional activity from two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty, you know, two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-three? To see that breakdown that way in reference to the response of, you know, COVID was an issue, probably wasn't an issue. So looking at the the breakdown in numbers, those were some of the questions that I received.
Well, I I do believe some of it's the growth of business and also the staffing in this area. To be to be fair, this goes back many, many years ago. I want to say this is vintage, probably oh-seven, oh-eight or thereabouts. There was a point in time where it was necessary to impose a layoff here at the city. And each department participated in that. And this was a division in finance that gave up some positions at that time. And they've not really had the positions restored. And and generally, we've had a lot of these, what I'm going to call, budget-neutral years. And when this work area had given up positions, and then we kind of went into a budget-neutral mode, they really have not had a chance to fill the positions. So, you know, it's it's a combination of a number of factors. You know, it's it's no reason to be ashamed of growing businesses. But again, that's that's grown work burden, it's grown volume in that work area. And, you know, those are the pressures that are coming to play here that have brought us to this place.
I was going to say, one one final question. One of the concerns, I was actually speaking to a constituent last night, and of course, they said shame on council because it's taken us this long to to request a audit. So one of the things, you know, being a new counselor, my question is, how did we get here? How did we get to the point where we haven't had an audit in all these years? And I think getting some historical data with me serving now on this audit committee, you know, I know that at a time, you just talked about layoffs, and in two thousand six or before, we disbanded the audit department. So after, it was before John Redman, whoever the individual, what was the individual name that?
Roger Seacrest.
Roger Seacrest. When, after he left, we had no audit department. We actually had no, before that time, we had no transitional audits either. We had no true audit nor complacency process. So when we asked, how did we get here? We got here because now the time is is now to get our audits and compliances. And we had a charter review back in, was it twenty twenty?
Twenty twenty-one.
Twenty twenty-one. And the conversation was audits, audit committee. And even before that, I think Counselor Mike Baker was on a subcommittee where they actually reinstituted the audit department. So it's taken a long time for us to actually get to where we are now. But we have to, we have to look at the historical data of we had no audit department. And we had to get back on track and actually develop a true plan or action. And that was something that I've always said when we stand up here, even when Elizabeth Barfield was right there. I say, we do these audits, but an audit is no good if we don't turn back around and and actually have a plan of action to bring you back six months down the line and see what type of solutions that we have come up with from this audit. An audit is no good, it's only paper if we don't actually implement a plan and we don't execute the plan that's implemented.
Admittedly, the circumstance calls for some action. It's it's not my role to define what that best action should be. I I agree with you, you know, some concerns you have. But we need to be fair, we need to, you know, put our best minds to it. The idea of circling back and revisiting to see how the plan is functioning is is a very good idea. And and you're correct in saying, over over time, the audit function has been maybe a one-man show at points, maybe not at all at some points. And in in my arrival, my tenure here with the city, I came into Daniel Forte's shop nearly four years ago. But in my time with the city in various roles, what I have generally seen due to the the staffing level in audit is that you would be requesting an audit upon the retirement of a department director, someone, a director has perhaps left town for other employment. So we're in transition, we're expecting change in a department. For instance, the the sheriff's office, in in the most recent election with Sheriff Countryman, we had a decommissioning of the marshal's office. And he specifically requested that we come in. He was going to be new in his elected role. He wanted us to come in and take a look at the sheriff's office, which included the jail. But that's been generally the type of audit that we would request authorization for due to the level of staffing that we had in audit. You know, if we had one face or two faces or three or whatever we may have had. Right now, we're coming up on shortly, hopefully, being able to have three field auditors and myself, which will probably be our best staffing in a very, very long time. You've brought up some very good points.
Thank you.
Okay, Counselor Kogle?
That's all forty-five point one million, so a little bit to wrap your head around. To Counselor Tucker's point, i- is there any way that you can provide to us, either verbally now or in the future, the breakdown of the years from nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-three of uncollected or unprocessed revenue?
We actually have.
Is it?
Not in the detail, but on the face of that last tab, simply on the face of the last tab. If you go there, and it doesn't, it's not detailing anyone or anybody. You go back there, and with the toolkit, you've got the years listed and the the total of the numbers for each of those years. For instance, in fiscal nineteen, you were at seven point seven million. In fiscal twenty, you go down to three point seven million. Then in twenty-one, you're back up to eight point six. So that listing of of where we were at an annual level, that that doesn't, you know, put a high beam on any neighborhood. And one thing that I think is, if we're going to have an issue like this, we didn't leave anyone out, we didn't leave anyone behind. It's every district, every neighborhood. You'll find that many of the businesses that you've patronized over the years maybe make an appearance, they're in there maybe at least once. And it's a shame, but it affects everyone. Now, on the flip side, though, there are folks that have shook every hand in the revenue division, and their their houses in order. But they generally did that by being boots on the ground, facing the room, and their face wasn't going to leave the room till they had what they needed. And and there are folks that really slated it. And, you know, we we've got to be careful what kind of message we send to them.
Do you do you know, I mean, Columbus is the second-largest city in the state. Are you aware of any other cities that have this sort of issue on this scale?
I'm not necessarily really aware of any. I do know and have business contacts through leadership in GGF away, folks affiliated with, you know, Tyler Tech and their products out of Lawrenceville, Georgia, that are using the products that we use. So there are other sister cities that are using these products and have experiences probably to share. I am not aware of others that are exactly in this situation.
I know we only went from nineteen, but do you think that this goes, this is, and you don't, it's not, I'm not holding your feet to the fire or anything, but if, do you think that this goes beyond nineteen?
Well, I know that there were situations, you know, photographs of stale checks and the like that go back, probably the oldest one that I had in my hand, but it involved a business that was no longer operable, it was no longer in town, a check dating dating back to December of two thousand six. Now, the thing is, the availability of information, you know, at some point, we we were working awfully hard and we were trying to do the right thing, you know, right thing above all else. And when you're doing that, you know, the the documentation is is a little difficult to tie together, the the older you get. But it's not uncommon to see maybe a stale item from two thousand fifteen or two thousand sixteen or, you know, it's not uncommon, but to be able to compile the the data with a level of confidence, it's it's not quite there, but but it certainly predates two thousand nineteen.
I'm sure I'll come back, just, I'll let some of my other colleagues have have a turn here as they come back.
Counselor Begley?
Hey, Donna. Three questions.
Yes.
On the first finding regarding the the ten ninety-nines, ten ninety-eights.
Yeah.
When I read this, it doesn't sound like your point is there were ones missed. It sounds like it's an inefficient process because rather than providing the data throughout the year, they're trying to compile it all at the end.
They capture it like in the couple of months at the end of the year when it's approaching the time where you've got to send out these documents to the folks that we have had business transactions with. And perhaps if it was maintained the months of the year, and you have a little bit of interplay, I see why the bulk of it has landed in procurement, because that's where vendors are set up. If you think about it, that's where the vendors are set up. And vendors are going to receive these taxable documents, okay, that they need to file their tax documents with others. But when we do that, you know, on the other end of it, you have the possibility of voided checks or canceled checks, which are treated differently in the software and the like, where you need to have more complete communication between the General Accounting Division and procurement, maybe to keep it a slicker process. But it would probably be to their benefit to maybe work on it a little bit each month rather than get plowed for two months out of the year.
Got you.
There would be merit in that.
The second question, can you describe the mini-conversions in your third finding, the three to four mini-conversions of the payroll system here?
Right, what what I learned in in visiting with teammates in general accounting, the advantage products, hand in hand with CGI, they roll out frequently these upgrades and and many conversions, if you will, much like your your cell phone company may roll out a new security patch or something for your phone or whatever. And and these these things have merit. But there are competing ERP public sector providers. I hold out as HTE, one of them that I've worked with in several cities. But there are different providers of ERP programming for governments. And for whatever reason, those that we're working with, it's it's maybe okay to roll these out, even if you roll them out once a year, it's probably not a crime. I mean, you could, you know, build a case, and and there might be merit in doing so. But when they roll them out, apparently, they've not done the quality testing, what have you, you know, at headquarters. They've not done the testing. So the bugs are being reported by our employees. You know, we're we're finding things that don't work, we're reporting them back. We're almost like their test team, which tends to disrupt our routine workflow.
I I understand that. Are we actually converting data or is it just receiving the updated software version?
You're receiving the updated software. And then, when the function on this menu didn't work the way it's supposed to.
Okay.
Well, hands in the air, report that, you know. Or the function that used to work over here doesn't work the way it used to, and I can't find what I'm looking for, you know. So you go through this, but you're going through it not quite quarterly, perhaps each year. And in the industry, the folks that provide these programs, this isn't necessarily normal. Maybe once a year you might do it, maybe once every eighteen months you might do it. For something to happen three to four times a year is a little unusual. And it tends to disrupt the routine work of folks that work pretty hard.
Got it. Third question. On the third auditor finding that says adjusting entries are posted to revenue accounts at fiscal year-end before external auditor arrives. Do you have the details of those calculations?
I don't have the details for the calculations. What you have in your proof that we did homework, you can see that there's an internal office memorandum that's issued in late July or in the month of August between the revenue division and the general accounting requesting said entry. And in some cases, the entries out of those numbers, you can trail them right back into that that summary forty-six million that we had in July. You can see where they were getting the numbers. But how they compile that, I've I've been led to believe that we're basically, we're taking rolling averages, you know, that type of thing.
So so do we know if that calculation was provided to the external auditor or have we requested that calculation of that adjustment journal entry?
I don't know. I I've been led to believe that there's been some discussion, and I've talked with Malden Jenkins, and that I I work well with them, that there have been conversations about backlog and and what to do with backlog and what have you. Whether, I I got the impression that they're not real familiar with this entry. They're not aware of the entry. But that might be a discussion to have with them.
Okay. And then, one clarification. I know we talked about the changes of the internal audit function over the year, but the external auditor has been here every year, correct? Like, when we go to the the finance website, we, like, the public can go see on our public website, every audit from two thousand two to two thousand twenty-two that was done by the external auditor.
Right.
Okay. I know when people hear that, hey, there's not an audit function, I don't want people to kind of freak out. There there has been an external audit function, and everyone can access.
No, you're talking about our internal audit, yes. If you if you go out to the city's website, to the page or the tab that's dedicated to internal audit, you can see reports by year. And they go back, my predecessor, Mr. Redman, you can go back our history of the work that has been completed and presented to council members each fiscal year, about as far back as we can go. But you can see years of activity, yes.
I I just want to make sure when people heard that there is changes in the internal audit function over over time, there has always been an external audit, and everyone can access the city's website and see all the external audits for the past twenty years.
I can tell you that every audit that we have documentation on that is in our records appears on that website, yes.
Okay. Okay, Counselor Thomas?
On page eleven of your report.
Yes.
You say that there is an inconsistent policy enforcement of the five consecutive-day leave rule.
Right, right.
It's my understanding that the five consecutive-day rule is one that is found in businesses all over the country, if you will.
Right.
That the person or the employee who handles money must take a leave of five consecutive days so that someone else will come into that position and do that work in case there's a glitch or a foul play or whatever. Your language says there was inconsistent policy enforcement of the rule.
Yes.
Is that a rule of the department? Is that a rule of the city? Is that a? Is that a, as a result of an ordinance? What constitutes that rule?
I'll, I'll share with you what we know about what we've said there. The Lighthouse Service is where we got our first whistleblower report that dealt exactly with this matter. And it identified by name the, the lead in this division, in revenue division, as being the only exception to the rule, what have you, and could this be investigated or researched. In doing our homework, we went to HR, among other places, we looked for, is it a city rule? Is it something, it's compliance at a city level? No. But we did learn that many, many years ago, this is perhaps back in the oh-seven, oh-eight, whatever, that back in, in, at that point in time, in finance, the rule was adopted. And, and you're very correct, many businesses, especially the banking industry, use this, this five-day consecutive rule. And regardless of, perhaps you have a month leave that you're, you're entitled to, but you have to take at least five of those days consecutive. And there's a purpose, as you said, behind that. What we found, though, was that when we reached HR, they did not have any knowledge of a rule either at the city level or for that matter, at the finance level for this, other than we were hearing from other sources, such as whistleblowers, that finance had adopted such a policy. Now, what we found, we did some homework in terms of, we looked at this from, the assistance from HR, folks like Tanika and, and Carlin, for instance, were assisting us. We also looked at it from the Fran Dye side to look at the usage of leave, not necessarily finance-wide, but particularly in the division where the question was raised, where the hand went up. And we found that it wasn't isolated to just one person. You did have some folks that were very much complying, as, as if, you know, they were getting their hands spanked and they were going to comply. But then you had others in the workplace and it was not just one person. So that's, that's where, you know, it's a bit more mellow message, you had some folks that were complying, were going to do this, and some folks that didn't necessarily have to.
I guess one of my concerns is if we need to make this a regulation from the city, that this happens for every department that handles money, not just the finance department, but for all of them, that whoever does that has to take this five consecutive day leave. I, I'd like for us to review that and see if we are not liable for that. The other thing that I want to speak to is before we got all of the audit findings and so forth.
Right.
I was hearing out in the community that we were forty-five million dollars short of money. And on your first audit finding, you say that unpressed, unprocessed transactional activity in the revenue division totaling forty-five point one million has been identified. I guess my question is, are we missing forty-five million dollars?
Well, I think we need to be a little cautious as to how we express this. This is an unrealized opportunity. Don't think of this.
What does that mean?
Well, it's unrealized and that those checks are stale and you can't take them to the bank this afternoon. That's an issue. You know, that, that is an issue. That's always going to be an issue. So that could have been revenue. That could have been revenue, that could have been cash in the bank. Those are things that could have been. So that's an opportunity lost or an opportunity deferred, if you will, you know. Now, it's not theft, you go back to the days of, you know, Mr. Dempsey and Company. It's, it's not that kind of action.
Go back to the days of what?
Mr. Dempsey with cash. It's not that kind of matter. It is not that kind of matter at all. It's not that kind of missing cash. It's not that event. This is sort of the opportunity that you've lost to take a check to the bank. Now, it is missing revenue. Yes, it is. And it's missing cash, cash that could have been. Now, it doesn't mean when you develop an action plan that you can go back to someone and perhaps make good on the transactions. Certainly a possibility. But don't, please don't confuse, you know, sort of a criminal event that we've had maybe years ago with, we're missing cash, you've lost the opportunity at the moment to realize that revenue.
Well, one of the, the responses that I have made to some people in the community is that, to my knowledge, and I want that underlined.
Yeah.
There is no issue of criminal activity in the finance department. We're not saying somebody has stolen this money.
No, no.
That's not the case.
I, I think those are very, very hasty words. Those are hasty words. Because what we're looking at here is, is it not realizing critical staffing needs? Is it perhaps, you know, not being terribly efficient in our work? You know, it could be sloppy record keeping. It could be a wide variety of things. But I, I don't think it belongs in that category. That, that's not the neighborhood this belongs in. But it is still the reality of checks that you can't take to the bank today.
I, I understand that. And that was the point that I wanted to make.
Right, right.
Is that we do not believe that there has been criminal activity of somebody stealing the money from the city.
No, I think.
It has been.
Right.
The way the business has been conducted has been inefficient or sloppy or whatever.
Sloppy or whatever. I, I think you have, you have it quite clear in your mind that, that yes, it, it does not make for crime. You know, crime is what crime is. This is a wide variety of other things. It's inefficiencies, it's sloppiness, it's, it's not recognizing critical staffing needs. It's maybe ten years of budget-neutral staffing. It, it's a wide variety of other things, but that does not necessarily make for crime.
And I want, I want that to be clearly understood, that we are, are not saying that there is criminal activity in the finance department.
No, I believe you have nailed it, absolutely. And, and you've understood my message. This was not for fear or fright. This was, for one thing, to convince you, to ensure for you that we have done our homework. We don't just throw words out and see if they stick. We don't play like that. That this is, is the proof, working in collaboration with folks like Troutman Pepper and well-intentioned whistleblowers that only want the best for the community that they love. And I think you, you've nailed it.
Great. And I do also want to reiterate that the policy of transitional audits is comparatively new. We didn't, used to do that. That wasn't a regular feature. But now, I think with both the department and the, the new managers that we have in all of our departments, as they come in, a transitional audit is, is authorized and called for. This has not always been the case. It has been audited, the audits have been done regularly, if you will, but not, not as a transition. And I, I am very glad that we're doing those transitional audits and making sure that as you start your tenure as the manager or as the director, there's a transitional audit and things are there for you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. Counselor Davis?
Thank you, Mayor. I just listened in some of these explanations and the words, I think we're using way too soft words because gross negligence comes to my mind. And I think it's going to be awfully hard, before all this is over, that you're not going to be able to point the finger at someone or somebody. But let me just say in, to the, to the public, you, you got to realize that this is the beginning of findings and a, I guess, a presentation of what we've initiated, the council initiated back in July, and here we are today. But this is kind of the first part of it, the internal audit. We've also initiated investigative arm with Troutman Pepper to do work. We've also got an external, well-known auditing firm that's also working with investigative body. And then we've got an external auditor, too. So there's a lot of moving parts. There's a lot of, I guess, statements that don't have periods, there's still question marks, and we got to find those periods. But the one thing that comes to my mind here, as I work and deliberate through all this, this information, is that it's more evident to me than ever that we need to focus on our auditing department, and not only our auditing department, but a compliance aspect to that auditing department. It needs to be built, we need to fund it, and we need to do that. It is evident to me when I'm looking through here that we've got to have better processes, controls, oversight, compliance. That's what compliance means. It's no different than any other Fortune five hundred company that's out there. They have the same thing and it's there for a reason. And it's become obvious to me that we, it's necessary that we need, do that. And if we don't, we're failing. We're failing the citizens of Columbus. Ms. McGinnis, you're, you're CPA, right?
Yes, I am.
You also have another title, a CFE. Tell me what that is.
Well, that's a certified fraud examiner's accreditation.
Okay.
And obviously, it speaks to fraud, it speaks to, you know, opportunities for fraud, the legal side of how, how we deal with fraud, you know, that type of thing.
So you're a certified forensics auditor.
Yeah.
You're also our internal auditor, director of internal auditing, and you're also our compliance officer.
Right.
You got your hands full.
I haven't had a little bit of leisure lately, that's for sure.
Well, look, I want to thank you for your hard work and efforts. This is not, I can, I can see it. It's not easy for you to do this, but it must be done. It's the right thing to do, and I'm sure, how many years have you been doing this?
Been doing this work for a long time, probably twenty-five to thirty years.
Okay, so.
This has been, it's had more twists and turns than most of them. The intent here is to be fair, factual, we're serving reality inside of the bounds. And we don't, from the audit perspective, we don't present that we have all of the solutions or that we have something special to add to the solutions or how you develop a plan. But it, it calls for a plan, of course it does.
Well, and I know this is not your first rodeo, and I appreciate the, the mentality as to focus on that's how you go about doing your, your work. I want to, I wanted to play off of Counselor Tucker's questions about trying to put this more in layman's terms. And I want to go to some of your findings here, and I, I know that this may be a little Greek to the citizens watching, but I've got my report here and I'm just going to ask you the questions off here.
Okay.
It's from your findings, so you'll know and you'll be able to answer.
Right.
But, and I want it more in layman's terms and understand, I think I know what I'm seeing here, but I need, I need you to tell me if I'm accurately.
Okay.
Seeing this and it's being reflected. But I'm going to number two on the revenue side, on the auditor's findings. Bullet point number one, where it talks about the, the activity is not banked, details appear to be supplemental attachment dollars now represent an unrealized revenue liability in the year received. We do not have an allowance for these transactions. Also go down a little bit further at bullet point and said that there is an allowance, though, and I'm come to realize that this allowance is posted in the external auditor report, or the CAFR, Certified Annual Financial Report that goes out.
Right.
And they'll be working on that. I guess they have certified that and agreed to that. There is an allowance for the lost revenue or the lost uncollectibles.
Well, in, in.
In the ambulance EMS side of things.
Yes, now, when, when we look at that, coming from your, your last published CAFR, act for, if you will, these days, you see a table of support there that identifies for the general fund, that element of the allowance, which I believe is a little over thirteen million, about thirteen point three million dollars. Now, that's intended to provide an allowance for any of the activities that feed into the general fund. Now, of that, of course, EMS billing is, is a portion of that. You had a couple of those loans that are very aged, that had been given to outside legal counsel to try to pursue like a decade or so ago, and there were some deficiencies there where we're not going to be able to collect on them. They would also, from a community redevelopment or reinvestment perspective, like a small business loan or a first-time homeowner's loan, if those have been identified by outside legal counsel, you know, they're going to be out there twenty years from now if they're not written off, you know, those are in the wheelhouse of general fund. So perhaps they stay, if you look at thirteen-three and you say, that's an adequate allowance for me, that I'm comfortable with that. If you're not comfortable with it, I mean, obviously, we're, at, at the moment, we're overstating the assets, you know, if we know something's not collectible, that perhaps we correct that. But the allowance is meant to be there for a reason. It's meant to protect against those uncollectibles. But when I talk about not having an allowance for unrealized revenue, like this backlog and business licensing, that is not intended to play against that general fund thirteen point three.
Well, and let, let me, I, I want to go from there, okay? I just use the allowance for the ambulance EMS side. Now, I want to go over to accounting.
Okay.
And bullet point three and four, where it talks about the fixed asset reporting may not always be current and new acquisitions and auction disposals may not be recorded for several months till it runs up to the year-end external audit process. And also, the next one says adjusting entries posted revenue accounts fiscal year before the external auditor arrival, sweep liability balances associated with the unprocessed licensing backlog for fiscal year. Now, help me understand this, because when, when I'm reading this, I, I'm, I'm determining it as unworked, uncollected, unprocessed. There's money that's out there, the forty-five point one, or you pick a number, it's out there, but it has not been worked, it has not been collected, it's still out there.
Right.
But when I read this, it tells me that the journal entries are not matching up in my mind. And then I look at, it talks about assets, and I'm concerned that in the balance sheet or the financial statements, that this is being recorded as a asset.
Well, see, what happens, those requested entries shortly before the auditor's arrival, and I know that in general, the backlog matter has been discussed with the external auditor. I know in general it's been, but they appear to be unaware of these entries. These entries create the illusion sort of period to period, year to year, of relative sort of normal another day in the neighborhood, and doesn't necessarily draw attention to the backlog condition. That I find troublesome, you know, that, that, that's a bit of a deception there. But I know that there has been a discussion with the external audit firm. I know that there's been an open conversation about this. Now, whether they are aware of the entries is, is a different conversation that I have not yet had.
Well, in my mind, and the P and Ls I deal with and the financial statements I deal with, I mean, those in our business are losses. It's uncollected revenue, it's accounts receivable, I mean, you look at it any way, but it's a liability. It's not an asset, and it would be wrong to count it as an asset. Now, I don't know what, based on the information I'm reading, which as a counsel, I would like, next week, I would like to get our external auditor in here because I want them to explain this very part of this, if that's an approved accounting principle, a practice, that they are approving of all their clients, is it standard, is that a standard practice? Because I'm not matching it up. When you talk about a sweep here, that tells me that it's somehow being moved around in a sense that you're inflating your asset side, but it's really a liability side. I don't know where it's being counted on the liability side, but the only thing that comes to my mind is all this stuff you hear about in New York now, in the courts, is somewhat exactly what I'm seeing here. Tell me I'm wrong.
It wouldn't be unreasonable to hear from Malden Jenkins directly. They have a number of clients throughout the southeast, frankly, and it's, they specialize in public sector. I can't really speak to how often they see what we do. Are we truly like a one-off or do they see it twenty percent of the time? I'm not going to go out on that limb because I don't have the background, don't have the depth of information to, to share that with you. I don't think it's unreasonable to ask them to come talk to you and, and speak to you about, you know, what their interpretation is, what they see, you know, is this a traditional activity? And let them speak to it.
Well, you know, another thing here that we're dealing with, that we've all learned about is the statute of limitations. There's a point that we can't go back and we can't collect. It, it is an absolute loss and it's going to have to be recorded as a loss. Now, I don't know how the external, external auditor's going to deal with that. I don't know how the books are going to go back and be corrected. I don't know how you deal with that at the state level when you're reporting. I don't know how you deal with that at the state level when you're reporting, but somewhere it's going to have to be counted as lost revenue. We did not process it, and we did not collect it for whatever reason. Everything that's being talked about here today.
Well, I do know
And that goes to where I'm talking about putting a period at the end of, of, of all these statements
Right.
That we're dealing with right now. And it's not finished, like I said.
Well, I
We'll, we'll be getting another report soon.
Well, I will share with you, if you ask Malden Jenkins to come back and speak with you, they will certainly address your concerns. I do know that, following the matter in our clerk of courts area, that Mr. Redmond and I were involved with Malden Jenkins, and actually restated the financial statements, and reopened them, to correct them, to reflect the activities that had taken place. So, you know, they've, they've been through that rodeo before, they've done things like that, where they've had to face the, the impact of statute of limitations, and, and the, the impact upon the transactions. We've, we've walked that walk with them before, in a different setting, albeit a criminal setting. And they have a depth of background. I know that if you request their presence to come visit with you, and, and talk to you, and address your questions, they'll be happy to do that.
And I think we need to, I think we need to get them here next week, because there's, there's, what I'm looking at in the findings and the audit responses here, there seems to be some, you know, we, we need to figure that out, if, if, if that's what our external auditor firm is, is determining as an appropriate practice. We need, we need to turn, because it concerns me, and that's what I'm looking at, but I'm, you know, I'm not at the level where you function and some of the others in the financial arena, but it, I can see some things here that concerns me. So, Mayor, I, I would like to ask that we have our external auditor come in, and that we can have an opportunity to talk with them.
We can do that. I think that, I don't know if it's, it would be more proper to go through the audit committees, since they actually deal with the external auditor, and that way you'd have the citizen input, too. But we'll, you know, we certainly don't mind reaching out to the, to the auditor.
All right. Well, I yield, I'm going to let some of my colleagues ask questions.
All right, Counselor Kogel.
I'm just, I'm going through some of this response from our finance department, and, sorry, and on the third page or so, one of the responses is that, that it's inaccurately stated that there's 45.1 million dollars of unprocessed transactions catalogued in the CCG lockbox. And, and, and I'm wondering how we're saying that that's inaccurate, if I'm looking at 200-plus pages of unprocessed business license numbers and business licenses. So I'm, I'm wondering if we can go through these findings
Yeah, the, the
In our response?
Finance director, just with every audit, she'll come up and be ready to respond. We were just letting you get your questions
Okay.
Asked of the internal auditor, and then we'll move into the responses.
Okay. Yeah, I have a lot of questions on our responses to this.
Okay.
Could I, how the internal auditor state, so could we have additional questions?
Yeah, I mean, they typically stand there and are able to, to deal with them together.
And ultimately, if you should have questions of me after the fact, I reach out, and I'll be very responsive to you.
Well, it's better to get them asked, I think, out here.
Admittedly, right here, right now.
So I don't see any other questions, so Ms. Alexander, if you want to come forward and talk about some of the responses to these.
Oh, that was a lot. Good morning, Mr. Mayor, members of council, Mr. City Manager, Mr. City Attorney. First, let me just say that I have not had the pleasure prior to this morning of seeing the full report. I did request to see the supplemental information that was being provided, and that was not provided to me prior to, so I have not had the opportunity to provide the level of scrutiny to the supplemental material. But I did reply to the draft audit report that I received from the internal auditor, and I'd just like to say, since, you know, we're talking big numbers here, and we're talking buzzwords, it's just, it really, really, really behooves me to say that there is not 45 million dollars missing. There is no missing money in the revenue division to the tune of 45 million dollars. So I, I just, I had to say that, first off, because that kind of comes into play later on in, in my presentation, but that just, that, I, I just had to make that comment. So again, in terms of the response to the audit, what's been passed out to you is also in the packet, it is in the booklet, it is directly behind the auditor's report, but in the response, what I did was attach the auditor's finding, and then provided the response right below it, so that you didn't have to do the back and forth in try, in terms of looking at what the finding were, was, and looking for the response, or looking at the recommendations, and seeing what the response is to the recommendation. But in the purchasing division, again, I like to say that we issue 1099s in the purchasing division of the finance department. We don't issue 1098 statements. That is a mortgage interest statement. As long as I've been with the finance department and within the city, we've never issued 1098s out of the purchasing or finance department. So the 1099 process is housed within the purchasing division, that is, because they handle vendor management within the finance software. We issue 1099s in accordance to IRS guidelines, and we mail those before the January 31st deadline every year. So after those forms are mailed out by the January 31st deadline, staff, they handle any returns that may come back in the mail due to an incomplete or incorrect address.
Ms. Alexander, excuse me just a second.
Yes.
City, city manager wants.
No.
Oh, you, okay, I'm sorry. Continue, that was my fault.
Shall I proceed, Ms. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. So we do handle any returns that come back, if applicable. I will say that in 2020, 2021, and 2022, the number of processed or issued 1099 forms was 240, 308, and 477, respectively. Now, we issue 1099 miscellaneous forms, we issue 1099 NEC forms, which is non-employee compensation, and we also issue 1099G forms. So while the number of 1099s have increased within the finance department in terms of processing, this is due to the ARP program that the city administers. You know, we've administered two phases of this ARP program, where we've provided grants to the small business community, to nonprofits, and those individuals are required to receive a 1099G form. As far as the processing of any returns, what we found is that, that averages to be less than 20 returns that we handle on a, 20 pieces of return mail, I should say, that we handle on an annual basis. So with the level of effort that's put in place in terms of the 1099 process, it just doesn't warrant any additional staffing and purchasing to handle 1099s. I mean, it's not that much in terms of volume that's handled. The finance department, however, has always been considerably lean, and so, you know, we'll take any staff if you give it to us. There are plenty of other processes that we'd like to improve, that we'd like to implement, but not for this particular purpose. So again, as it relates to the audit findings that were listed for the revenue division, it is inaccurately stated that there is 45.1 million dollars of unprocessed transactions catalogued as CCG lockbox. It is inaccurately stated that the lockbox activity has not been deposited into the city's bank. All transactions that have been catalogued in locks, in the Excel spreadsheets that we refer to as lockbox, is cash, this accounts for cash, that has been deposited in the city's bank account. So there is no missing money. Again, the lockbox is a PO box that's managed by the bank, and checks that are mailed directly to the city are treated the same as the checks that go directly to the bank. We process in that check, we make the deposit into the bank ourselves, and it is logged on that CCG lockbox spreadsheet. So whether you send your check to the PO box that the bank manages, or whether you send your check to the revenue office at 3111 Citizens Way, or the PO box, APO box, that the revenue division manages, if it comes in, and it's for occupation taxes, it is logged as, on that lockbox spreadsheet, and that check is deposited into the bank. So as of today, well, I should say as of November 28th, there are about 500 accounts currently pending processing in the revenue division valued at about $2.5 million. And what I mean by accounts pending processing, this is, this is, these are accounts where we have received the funds, and it is currently logged on the lockbox spreadsheet as being received, but just due to problems, could be an issue where we are still waiting additional information from the business. It could be that we just hadn't gotten to it yet. There are about 500 accounts that are, that's pending processing right now, valued at $2.5 million. And so again, the purpose of the lockbox spreadsheet is to track payments that have been remitted and deposited into the city's bank account by customer account number. So logging into lockbox allows staff to process the licenses over time, since we can't process all of the mail at the same time. And in-person interactions for us are handled as a priority. You know, we've had discussions with Malden Jenkins, we've had several discussions with Malden and Jenkins. Malden Jenkins is, you know, a very reputable accounting firm, they handle over 655, over 650 government clients throughout the Southeast. And they have reaffirmed that the revenue is properly recorded through our lockbox process. You know, the city operates on a modified accrual basis of accounting for non-exchange transactions, meaning that earned revenue is recorded when it's measurable and available, both measurable and available. And occupation taxes is a derived tax, it's derived tax revenue, and again, it's earned by us when the underlying exchange has occurred. The underlying exchange in the case of occupation taxes is when the business has earned the money, when they've received the money, just like with sales taxes, the underlying exchange for the sales tax revenue that we receive is when the sale has taken place. So I just wanted to, 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 to make that, make that point. So it would be inaccurate for us to record an allowance, you know, an allowance for bad debt for amounts that's listed on any lockbox spreadsheet, because these amounts represent cash that's already been deposited in the bank, and revenue that's already been recorded because it's cash in the bank. So part of the finding mentioned something to the effect of revenue notice, renewal notices not being mailed. Renewal notices are mailed, those are mailed annually. As part of our annual process, you know, we've talked about this before, the, and I can only assume that this is, you know, I haven't had no conversation or real discussion with Ms. McGinnis about the audit report, but I'm assuming maybe, well, the intention was to say that maybe the courtesy delinquent letters weren't mailed, and that is true. As we've mentioned previously, that did not occur in 2020, 21, and 22. But once it was discovered, the courtesy letters were sent out with the courtesy letters for 2023, and this was done in August of 2023. So in regards to what was made reference to as far as ambulance write-offs, ambulance write-offs occur monthly, and they occur for various reasons. It could be due to contractual insurance adjustments, it could be adjustments for deceased, indigent, or incarcerated persons. But at the end of the day, we do write-offs for ambulance bills on a monthly basis. And it is a policy decision whether or not to physically close out the receivable in the financial system, because once that receivable is closed in the system, it cannot be reopened, and payment cannot be posted for that particular account once it's closed. So on the balance, on the financial statements, you have the receivable, and then you have an allowance for that receivable, allowance for uncollectible debt. And as of now, right now, the ambulance allowance is about 70% of the receivable. We've written off as bad uncollectible debt about 70% of the ambulance receivable. There are no receivables dated prior to July of 2020 that has not already been written off and expensed as bad uncollectible debt.
Ms. Alexander, hold on just a minute. Counselor Begley.
Oh, I have a question about the previous two slides. Do you want me to? So if you can go back a couple slides, on this one, so I get that, once it's remitted, it goes to the lockbox, and I get that you send the renewal notices. Where do you track to ensure that everyone who received a renewal notice will receive a payment for them? Where, where is that tracker?
Everyone that receives a renewal notice, and we have not received payment for them, or processed a license, would show up in one or two places. I mean, it would show up in the lockbox spreadsheet as a license pending processing, or it would show up on our delinquency list.
I guess, can we see those? Because I know there's confusion of like, hey, this, this was missed or wasn't missed. Can we just see, like, hey, here's, here's everyone who received a renewal notice, this is when it was processed, just so we can kind of see that for ourselves? Is that possible? Understood you may have to remove some confidential information.
Right. That's something we can work on, most certainly.
And then, I guess my other question is, on the manual journal entries, the adjustment ones that were provided, because they are, you know, they're, they're large journal entries, do you have the Excel spreadsheet that shows those calculations?
As far as the journal entry? Yes.
Correct. Can, can we see those as well?
Sure.
And were those, was the spreadsheet calculation provided to Malden and Jenkins as well?
I'm not particularly sure if it was, because this is a year-end audit process that we do. There's a lot of things that we do in preparation for the external audit. I mean, at the end of the day, and with our conversation with Malden and Jenkins, is that this is current period revenue. So the process in terms of what should happen is that when we process, when we process license renewals and indicate that that renewal has been processed in the, in the lockbox spreadsheet, what should happen is that we should, at some point, record that, move that money out of sort of this holding account, this balance sheet account, into revenue. Because at the end of the day, it's all revenue. We technically could record it just as revenue and do away with the balance sheet holding account. We could, but we don't. We don't because it's a mechanism that we use internally from a balancing standpoint to it's a mechanism that we use internally from a balancing standpoint to see sort of where we are, you know, at any point in time in terms of what's been recorded in the lockbox spreadsheet and what's listed as processed on the lockbox spreadsheet.
So do they do any kind of, I mean, I feel like normally for those manual journal entries, there's a lot of attention, and so did they kind of?
No, all of our journal entries are done manually. I mean, I'm not.
Right, so I'm saying, but it's a large one, right? So it's like a ten million dollar journal entry. Well, I mean, manual being like, it's not the system doing it, it's you're calculating it. So on the, like a ten million dollar manual journal.
Really calculating it, though. What we're doing is we're moving what's remaining in the lockbox balance sheet account over into a revenue account.
I guess what I'm saying is, yeah, so I guess if you're saying that lockbox spreadsheet, if we get that, it's going to match these journal entries?
We should have the lockbox, we do have a lockbox spreadsheet that matches those journal entries, yes.
Okay, I guess that would be helpful, seeing the spreadsheets that show everyone who received a renewal notice, when we received their payment, and how that confirms these manual journal entries. I think that'll be very helpful.
But the process is to record it as revenue because it is current period revenue.
I think again, that I just, it's such a large journal entry that I think it's worth reviewing the calculation.
Sure.
All right, settle, counsel. Counselor Crabbe.
Why are we writing off the indigent care when we have an indigent care fund that we can pay for? You know, we can get paid out of that fund. Why are we writing that off?
The that is a policy decision, actually, in terms of utilizing the indigent care fund. Prior to this year, I think the funding for the indigent care fund, I shouldn't say this year, prior to F Y twenty-three. The funding that was being received in the indigent care fund was really for a particular purpose. I mean, for the most part, what happened was it went to the, it went to satisfy a contract that we had with a particular provider of indigent care services. And so, you know, if that's something that we could.
I'm pretty sure that this council has said on several occasions that, how we wanted that indigent care money to be spent. And I'm pretty sure, am I wrong? That we have said that we could use it to reimburse ourselves for expenses that we incur out of that account, and that's been for two or three years now.
And that's probably something we need to address, but is that tied to this somehow?
Yes, they're writing off the indigent care of the ambulance service.
So as the finance director said, in past years, three meals went directly to a particular entity. And they got a hundred percent, whether our collection rate was a hundred percent or not. They still got a hundred percent of three meals. And so only last year that we changed the way we deal with indigent care, and so it would be a policy issue based on the new direction. Because we've only been under this new direction one year, where the contract for that entity expired June thirtieth of
Twenty-two.
Twenty twenty-two. And then we decided to go a different direction. So if that's a policy decision going forward, certainly, I think that could be done, or that policy decision could be approved. But in the past, we didn't have an option because of a hundred percent of the three meals went to, and you know, the county hospital. I just wanted to make that point.
Okay. Were you through? Okay, Counselor Thomas.
If you will go back to the slide where you were. This says that renewal notices were mailed, are mailed annually, but that didn't occur in twenty twenty-one and twenty-two. Can you tell me why not?
So a renewal notice in my mind, again, having not had the pleasure of a conversation with Ms. McGinnis, I'm assuming that the renewal notices that's being referred to, the renewal notices that I'm referring to is the renewal packet that goes out to the businesses that has the actual occupation tax return, the instructions, and all the affidavits, all the affidavits needed to process their renewal. I'm making an assumption in terms of what it was said, or could be said in terms of renewal notices not being mailed. I'm making the assumption that it, that she may be referring to the courtesy delinquent letters.
Were renewal notices mailed in twenty twenty-one and twenty-two?
Yes, ma'am.
This says it did not occur.
I'm referring to the courtesy delinquent letters.
Okay, the courtesy delinquent letters were not mailed out?
Yes.
In twenty twenty-one and twenty-two? Why not?
Well, due to all the challenges that we had during the pandemic. You know, that was part of the presentation that we gave to council back in, in November.
So it was because of the pandemic that it was not, they were not mailed out?
As far as the courtesy delinquent letters? I mean, there were a lot of challenges that were, that were experienced in the revenue division during the pandemic. And it was it just was not done. Staff just did not send out the courtesy delinquent letters for twenty twenty, twenty-one, and twenty-two in those years. However, once it was discovered that those letters did not go out in those years, they went out this year, along with the twenty twenty-three letters.
And that caused quite a ripple in the community that people who got these delinquent, these courtesy letters that their business, that it was delinquent, got a notice in twenty-three that it was delinquent for twenty twenty-one and twenty-two?
That's possible, but they also, I mean, I would refer back to the business license that they received in those years as well, that also provided notice on when they were supposed to renew by.
Yeah. City manager.
So your packets were sent out each of those years?
Yes, the renewal packets.
And and so when they receive those packets, they know that their business license is due April one. That business knows that, right?
It's displayed on the license.
Yes, and it's displayed on the license. So when they received the notice this year that says you owe for twenty, twenty-one, and twenty-two, they had also received a packet that year to renew their license, right? When they received the packet, they received the packet twenty, twenty-one, and twenty-two. They just did not receive a notice saying, you need to come pay your bill, you need to come get your business license. They didn't get that delinquent, what you refer to as a delinquent courtesy notice. Courtesy.
The last year in which they held a license, they would have received a packet?
Yes.
That's correct.
So my point is, they received a packet and you know your business license is due April first, come renew your business license. What you failed to send is a, when you get a, when you don't pay your bill on time, they send you a late notice. That's what you failed to send out, the late notice.
Correct.
Saying you're delinquent. So when they got this thing in twenty twenty-three that says you owe for twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, why would that be a surprise to them?
I mean, I'm not sure. I mean, some businesses, you know, may have assumed that when they mailed in, because we do have this particular case where we have issues with, whether, whether there are problems. You know, they could have mailed in their payment, they could have mailed in some form of paperwork, but for whatever reason, we couldn't process it. And we would have sent them out a problem letter saying, hey, we can't process your renewal for whatever the reason may be. I mean, I, I'm not.
Other than that, it should not be a surprise that you operate a hamburger stand, restaurant. It should not be a surprise to you that you have not had a business license in two years.
True.
I just want to make that point.
But I wanted to make the point, if you will, Ms. Alexander, that
To hit your light, I'm sorry, I was turned off the wrong one.
Despite the COVID issue, you were able to send out renewal notices, but you were not able to send out the delinquent letters for twenty twenty-one and twenty-two. Is that correct?
Those did not go out in those years, that's correct.
You said that the reason they didn't go out was because of complications from COVID.
Well, there are a lot of complications. I mean, COVID is part of it, yes. I'm sorry if I misspoke.
But you were able to send out the renewal notices, you're saying? You just couldn't send out the courtesy letters? I guess I don't see the connection there. If you could send out the renewal notices, why couldn't you send out the courtesy letters?
Well, sending out the renewal packets is what's most pressing.
Is what?
It's what's most pressing, I would say, for staff in the revenue division is to send out those renewal packets.
I guess what my, Ms. Alexander, what my question is going to is the process that you used. What, what? You were able to do one part of it, but you weren't able to do the second part of it. And my question is, my concern is, if you could do this part, why couldn't you do this part?
Well, when you have limited resources, it comes to priorities. And, you know, having the limitation, the staffing limitations that were experienced in that division, as well as some of the other challenges that we've experienced in terms of the extension deadlines and the backlogs that it, that that created, it just didn't occur.
And I would say to you, Mr. City Manager, that some of the concerns that I received about these courtesy delinquent letters were not people who had not paid their bill. There were people who had paid their bill and still got a courtesy letter saying, you're behind for twenty or twenty-one or twenty-two, and they got that in twenty-three. That's, that's what I'm being told. Thank you.
That was explained.
Counselor Kogel.
You mentioned it several times on here to this point that we are considerably lean in staff. I've been sitting up here for a little less than a year, and why, why has it taken this audit to bring to our attention that we're experiencing a staffing issue in the finance department to a point where we can't do the simple fact of cashing checks? What, why, why are we just now hearing about this if this goes back prior to two thousand and nineteen? We sat here during the budgets cycle, and not once was it brought up that there's an issue in finance that requires additional staffing, or finance is in trouble, or we can't perform our duties. Why are we just now hearing about this to the tune of forty-five point one million dollars?
I really wish that forty-five million dollar number would not be referenced.
I have written on this finding report over and over and over again, why didn't we ask for help? Staff processes licenses over a period of time, and in-person interactions are a priority. Well, why didn't we ask for help?
Help was requested.
Why didn't we ask for help where we could outsource?
Let her finish the question, or the answer. If you ask her question, just let her finish.
Yes, help was requested. The finance department is no different than any other department. I mean, there are needs throughout this entire government, and during the budget process, additional staffing was requested.
Except for that this is one of the main financial arteries of our city. So in my books, the financial, the finance department takes priority.
Well, and I will say, you know, throughout the budget process as a very, as a participant in the process in terms of, you know, sort of seeing what goes on, you know, public safety is always pointed to as being as a priority.
And public safety came and asked for help?
Well, the finance department did request additional staffing. As many other departments, as many other general government departments did as well. During the, through the budget process.
A budget chair? I don't recall that.
Almost every department. I know the city manager had mentioned a number of times, almost every department asks for resources. And I think that in every situation, he's mentioned that they all need them. And in trying to put together the budget on the flow of the revenue versus the expenses, a lot of those requests don't get put in. Others are put in, and we can't hire during some of those years. It was just very difficult to try to find individuals going to work. And, you know, we had trouble, I'll remind this council, we had challenges with our pay plan. We had challenges not paying enough to try to get people to come to work. And this council authorized that pay study and then implemented the pay plan. Unfortunately, that was, it took about a year to do that, and a lot of those folks have already outpaced us moving on. So I think all of our departments have expressed at one point or another that they need personnel. Counselor Davis.
I'm, I'm gonna take this moment since we're talking about what's been termed critical staffing. I want to remind everybody that how the budget process works. Departments come in, they deliberate, they go through the city manager's office, city manager crafts a budget, it goes to the mayor, the mayor approves the budget, it comes to us. And then we have a budget process that we go through in an add-delete list. Let me remind everybody. You've got three major revenue arteries, as it was said, in this city that should be critical, should be extremely important, and should be treated that way. Clerk of Superior Court's office, the Tax Commissioner's office, and the Revenue Finance Department. That's the money flow. Clerk of Superior Court's been asking us for help, and you know what? We've given her help. We've granted her all her requests recently, just this past year. The Tax Commissioner has struggled. She's come to us and asked us many years. We've given her help and funded positions. If this is a critical need, if it's critical on the staffing standpoint, the city manager should know about it. He tells us it's a critical need, then it should be addressed in the budget while y'all are working on it. It should be in there if it's that important, and it should be approved, or it should be talked to us, the council brought to us during the budget process. And we would approve it. If we need help in there and we knew that it would help collect forty-plus million dollars in uncollected revenue, and by the way, let me just touch on that. I know everything you've been talking about here is excuse me, is internally, the money that the revenue department is handling internally, it's in your hand. You're not talking about the, it's not missing. That revenue's not missing, everybody knows that. It's uncollected. It's out there. It's never been collected. It's never been worked. It's never been processed. And some of it's going to be written off as a loss.
Well, that's not what Ms. McGinnis put in her.
I'm sorry, but you need to. I'm sorry, but you need to say that, we're not talking about internally what's in the hand of the revenue department that's being processed, that's been turned in, it hasn't been worked internally, but it's in that office, okay? And I keep hearing that, as far as the revenue side of it, but if you knew that there was a problem, which these numbers are showing that it has snowballed over the years too, this year's probably gonna be your worst year.
Well, these numbers are inaccurate.
Excuse me?
Okay.
Before COVID, we didn't have a problem. It wasn't that bad before COVID.
It was.
No, it wasn't, I, I've seen the numbers. It wasn't that bad, and we've lost some key people that have never been replaced, that have never been replaced. And if you are the finance director, if you are the city manager, and you're involved in that revenue department, I think that you would know everything that's going on and everything that's happening in that department. You wouldn't have to say, I didn't know, I need more information, nobody talked to me, I didn't get a chance to talk to the auditor, you should know all this. You should know it all, you should never have to say that statement in the positions that you hold. That's the truth of it. Now, the critical staffing, if you would have came to us and told us that we needed it because this is import- if this was important, that revenue to the city, that we know we need? We, look, our finances are in good shape, okay, but that's additional revenue out there that has not been collected for whatever reason, you can blame it on the businesses, or you can say there's another side of it, but two wrongs don't make a right. At the end of the day, two wrongs don't make a right. But I want the citizens to understand, if we knew that's a critical revenue stream that flows artery, that flows into the city, if we knew that you needed help in there, we would have gave you those positions and we would have funded, because the reality of it is, I will spend 100, 200, half a million dollars anytime to collect 5, 6, 7, 10 million dollars in a year, that's just, you know? That's just common sense, we can do that. So, this critical staffing, yeah, COVID's passed. But I see the collection rates of the tax commission, I see the collection rates of Clerk of Superior Court, but something's not matching up here. So I just want, when we keep talking about critical staffing, as it was said, I'm asking that question too. Nobody ever came to this body to request critical staffing needs, and if you knew about it, and we didn't have them, this body would have granted at any time a third-party help of staffing to come in, temporary staffing to come in and help and assist, and not only that, we probably would have went even further and got a professional firm to come in and help, to help catch up and collect that money, but what's happened, and you're gonna see this over time, is it's snowballed.
Well, what money?
I'm just saying, it's so far behind now, it's impossible for anybody to catch up. And as I said, you need to choose your word, I didn't say this, but you need to choose your words very, very, you just need to choose your words and how you present these things because there are several other reports coming. And eventually, they're gonna all match up. But I can tell you, if we needed help in that re- revenue department to catch up and collect the revenue, we would have got it, and we would have funded those positions to do it.
All right.
It just, it's never come to this body as an important matter, and that's the truth of it, Mayor, and you can paint it any way you want to, but that's the truth of it.
We're just, with a lot of information shared, I think it'd be good to hear...
Well, I think it'd be good too, but I'm just telling you on that one part, is that's the truth of the critical staffing side of it. That is the absolute truth.
Thank you, Counselor. Mr. City Manager?
I just want to say, I believe you've had a problem with filling, recruiting and retaining, uh, is what you've had.
Yes.
Uh, and that has been a challenge. I know that you have asked for positions, I don't know if they were in the revenue division specifically, but you've asked for positions, and I know that I've approved, um, temporary positions for you.
That's correct.
Uh, at, at the request, and so, but I, I think, you know, based on your last update, and you showed the percentage of times those positions were not filled, you've had a challenge retaining and then recruiting qualified people, so I, I just want to make that clear. And, and of course, you outline the budget process, and, and yes, that is the budget process that you outline, and, and those people that you mentioned, it come, they come year after year and ask for new positions. And I can't remember how many times I said at the last budget review, every person who stands at that podium and asks you for positions, they need them. I said it over and over and over again. I just don't recall whether you, you may have had one in there, but I think in revenue it was more, um, retention or recruitment, trying to get the right people in there, and that's what I recall as, as the more challenging thing. And, and I will go back and say, you know, you know, we, we, we need to clear up this $45 million. You know?
Right.
And, and I know that's stuck in heads, and you're gonna keep pounding it and saying it over and over again, but tell me again about this $45 million that they keep talking about.
So the $45 million number was derived from money that we've already received? So there is no $45 million number missing? And it is my understanding from reading this report that Ms. McGinnis isn't referencing any monies that we have not received. The $45 million, $45 million number is comprised of money that we've already received, which is why I say that it's inaccurate to state that we're missing $45 million. There's nothing in this report that speaks to, that I've seen. Now, if there's any additional information in the supplemental material that I have not seen, and I have not had the pleasure of scrutinizing, then, you know, most certainly, I'll, uh, take that notebook with me today and come back with some other, some additional information. But based on what I've seen, the $45 million number that's referenced is money that we already have in the bank.
So what, what's the gap between you saying that and, and internal auditor Donovan McGinnis saying it's, it's in the lot box?
I don't, I don't know. I, I mean, I think it's just a misunderstanding of, of, um, what the lot box represents. The lot box, the purpose of that lot box spreadsheet is really for us to keep track of, by account number, the money that we receive for a particular business.
All right, we've got a couple of counselors waiting in queue, Counselor Begley's been waiting for a while, Counselor?
I mean, so just a couple of clarifications, I, I haven't heard her say they're missing $45 million because of staffing, I've heard her say there's not $45 million missing, and so that, I know that's the crux of the question. Uh, I know we requested the lot box file that you said would show everyone who received a renewal notice, as well as their payment status. Is it possible to get that this week, uh, and as well as getting the internal auditor's report in an Excel format, just so that we can personally kind of review it and, and try to reconcile some of the information?
Well, I don't have the internal auditor's file.
Sorry.
Okay.
I, I'll ask that for her, but for, can we get those lot box file per year that shows everyone who received a renewal notice and the payment status? Can, can we receive those that, this, and, and see that it ties out to that journal entry? Can we get those files this week?
Well, now, let me just say that the lot box, um, spreadsheet is a dynamic document. So it's...
But did you, did you not memorialize it, like when you send it to the auditor that says, hey, here's this journal entry, here's this calculation, do you have that version saved?
We do, we do, but I think the point of, um, that memorialized document is not to, um, say this is, uh, the amount of money that, uh, we, that we see represented in unprocessed transactions. That's, that's not, that's not really what that means. At the end of the day, whatever's in that balance sheet account, that 21, and you've heard me refer to it as 2175, that's the balance sheet account number, whatever's in that account is moved to revenue. The purpose of the memorialized document is to come to how we divide up that revenue, whether it is reported as occupation tax or as the administrative fee.
So to clarify, if someone receives a renewal notice, we've not received cash at that point, so it's not in AR and it's not in revenue?
Right.
Where is that list of everyone who received a renewal notice and has, like, I, I, there should be a, a whole tracker that shows, here's everyone who received a renewal notice, and here's their payment status, and if they have not received payment, it wouldn't be revenue, and it would still show as uncollected, where is that tracked?
So those, um, individuals, and I, I think I'm understanding, if I'm understanding you correctly, those individuals would be memorialized on the delinquency list? It, because if we sent them a renewal notice and they have not renewed, they would appear on our delinquency list, and then what we do is we look to see if there is any one that's renewed, I'm sorry, that submitted payment through the lot box that's also on the list, then those, um, people would be set aside in terms of, um, a true delinquency because we've received some, some form of payment from those individuals.
So if you provide us your lot box spreadsheet that shows remittance, which means revenue, and you provide us the delinquency list, both those lists combined should represent everyone who received a renewal notice, correct?
Theoretically.
Can, can we get that? Because I, I think that's what we want to see is, here's everyone who received a renewal, here's what the payment status that they paid, which would come from the lot box spreadsheet, and here, these are the ones that didn't pay, and that's the delinquencies, delinquencies, I can't speak now, delinquency spreadsheet. That's what we want to see, because I think that would show...
Well...
That, that, that gets to our, our question.
And I think to some degree, um, it's not gonna give you 100% what you're looking for because the lot box spreadsheet is just a, um, catalog, is the cataloging of actual payments received. I'm gonna have to check and see if, on the files that we sent in terms of renewal notices that we sent to the print shop, if that's in Excel format.
Because, I guess that would be the question, so if you, if you're tracking who you received from, where are you tracking who you haven't received from and tying that out to the renewal notice? Because I think our, our understanding was even if you're, if you don't remit, you still have to shut down your business, so there should be a entire list, a tracker that says, here's everyone who paid last year, here's the renewal list, here's who's paid, here's who's not paid, and here's who's shut down. That should be a comprehensive list that ties out.
Well, no, it's, it would be a combination of several lists.
But, but somehow that, that should be able to be created that says, here is the entire list. Can we, can we receive that this week?
I can, we can provide to you the renewal r- report or a renewal list, right? On that renewal list, it has, um, the license year that's being renewed, and we can run that from, um, a point in time. We can provide a delinquent C-list, um, as well as the lot box Excel spreadsheet. We could also provide a closed list in terms of, uh, the businesses that have been closed. And I, all of those can be provided in an Excel spreadsheet.
So, so I, I don't think we're gonna have the domain experience to, to combine those together, can you, you get it where it's, where you've combined them, whether it's separate tabs or whatever, but we want to see everyone who received a renewal notice, whether or not they paid, it should either be they paid, they didn't pay, or they were shut down, like, we, we should be able to see that for everyone who received a renewal.
Yeah, I don't know if that's something that, um, can be done by Thursday.
But I, I guess that's the question, if we don't have that, how do we know everyone's paid?
Because those that have not paid are delinquent. They would appear on the delinquency, with the exception of the people that we've received payment from that's cataloged in the lot box.
Right, so we already have all the information, isn't it just pulling it into one spreadsheet?
Well, you more specifically went back to who was sent a renewal, and that is not, I don't believe we have that in an Excel spreadsheet.
So, so then how, where do you track? Then how do you know who received, how do you know you've went through the entire list if you're not tracking it?
The renewal, um, notice, um, renewal packets that are, are generated from the system is based on who had a, a license.
Correct.
Right, and so I'm not sure in terms of what we send to the print shop to be printed is in an Excel format. So what we could do is, I mean, I'm just trying to think of a way to get this information to you that's...
I'm, I'm trying to figure out how you track it though, because if you're, if you're saying these people paid and these people delinquent, and that's the full list, how do you know if you're not comparing it to who received a renewal?
Well, I mean, if you don't, if, if you don't have a license, you appear on the delinquent list.
I, I, but I guess that's my question, how do you know it's comprehensive if you're not comparing it to who received a license last year? Like, where is that reconciliation?
Hmm. Well, I'm, I'm, I'm thinking about the reports that's in the system, in terms of, um, what could be pulled. I mean, there is a renewal, a license renewal report that, um, we could generate. But I guess I'm trying to understand what's the, what are you trying to get to?
I, I want...
In terms of the information.
I, I want to, if we have that list of seeing who received a renewal, who paid, who didn't pay, who, who, who shut down, then we can reconcile that against the internal auditor's report to try to get an understanding of that $45 million and whether it's a legit number.
Well, it's not a legit number.
So we would like to verify that for ourselves by getting your information and comparing that to her information so that we can verify for ourselves?
Well, I can send you all the information that I, um, I can provide all the information that I believe will assist in, um, determining that...
Can you provide it in the format that I'm requesting?
I'm trying to, I, I'll have to see.
Okay.
That's, I'm, I'm just unsure if that initial renewal mailing is in an Excel format.
Okay.
Because you keep going back to the...
I mean, it should be easy to, to pull, I can't imagine not being able to pull it in, doing some kind of import, um, and I'm happy to help with that if, if needed, but I, I think that's super helpful, and especially because we're, we're bringing the external auditor in next week, I think that, that's why I'm pushing to get it this week, is so that we can review before next week's meeting.
I will work on that, um, today.
Okay.
Okay, thanks, sir, Counselor Davis?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, we've got a lot of supporting information, and this supporting information should be common information in the revenue department, I mean, it should be, that's what they do, that's their jobs, day in, day out, they, they should have all this and understand it. The other thing, uh, city manager's here, the other thing I wanted to make note of back on the critical staffing, which is, i- i- it's a very, very important point. A lot of the stuff we're dealing with, all of a sudden, we're starting to take action, but it started after August, which is after the council initiated this audit and the investigation into the revenue department. There's a piece in here now, all of a sudden, that says it's a critical need and it's being authorized by the city manager to get staffing in there. I don't know what that staffing means, but I guess it's going out and getting some additional help from either a temporary agency or professional agency, but it does say that the city manager is authorizing now, recently, more staffing for that department. And I'm just saying, we're doing it now versus why we didn't do it when we knew there was a problem. And I'm continuing to say, the revenue that we're talking about here is across all revenue streams in that department, you've got to go across all of them, there's a lot of moving parts in that department to total that, that's the way I'm reading this information in the book. And it's still not collected, it's a liability, it's lost revenue, until you get it in hands and you put it in the account. It's a liability, it's lost revenue until you get it in hands and you put it in the account and it's accounted for in the books as an asset. Right now, it's a liability and, and I, I think that that is what we need to focus on instead of dancing around the issue of what is happening internally in the department and what is being trying to be worked in hands versus what's out there still mysteriously floating around. And a lot of that, we, we will never, ever get our hands on that because of statute of limitations.
But what are we referring to?
And those are conversations I want to have with the external auditor.
Yeah, and, and certainly, uh, let me just say, I, you know, I don't know when you requested temporary help, but it was certainly before this.
Yes.
It was not during this that she's requested additional help from me. I just want to make that clear. So it was not when she asked me for help, it was not a reaction to the start of an uh internal audit. And then the other thing, uh, in dealing with years 20, 21, 22, uh, Mr. City Attorney, it's my understanding the statute of limitation is four years. So that revenue is collectible. They are delinquent because they feel, and I'm, I'm saying, we, they had a res- our revenue division and finance had a responsibility to be pushy, if you will, it, when, when that, you don't renew, if you are a business, you know you need a business license. You know that. Every person in this audience or listening by television know. If I have a business, I have, I need a business license and that business license is due April 1. But now, for three years, or council extended that date to June and then to May this year. But you know you need a business license. You know you cannot go one year, two year, three years, whether you're a law firm or a hamburger joint or an insurance office, you, you are required by law to have a business license. You're required to pay your utility bill. They send you a late notice. You don't pay it, they cut you off. We should have been there to enforce. It's no, they did not. Uh, they did not send those delinquent notices to code enforcement during the pandemic 2021, 22. Um, they did not send courtesy delinquent notices, they did not send it over to code enforcement to go knock on the door to tell someone who already knows they need a business license. They did not do that. And so when they received the notice September 2023, it should not be a surprise that you owe. If the IRS, if you don't do your, they come, it should not be a surprise when the IRS knocks on your door. And so, but that's collectible revenue, it's within the statute of limitation. And our people have been knocking on doors since this pro, since it came to our attention. And, 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 and we've been, I've authorized overtime to go, for them to go and knock on these doors to tell people they owe what they already know they owe. And, and so the reports that I get is that we are going to be done with that by December 31st. For those collectible 20, 21, 22, and 23 by December 31st. That's what they, they've done. And so so it was not a reaction, the help that she asked for was long before this became an issue.
And I would like to say that I, I, I think this is obviously something that we'll have to consult with our attorneys about in terms of the statute of limitations on taxes, but I do know as far as the um tax, your taxes for the state of Georgia, if you, if there's any instance of fraud or if you fail to file, there is no statute of limitations on taxes. So I think um we need to just make sure that um we're um correctly addressing the, the statute in terms, from a legal standpoint. So we'll obviously consult with the attorneys on that, but I do know with the state and with the federal government, if it's fraud or if you fail to file a return, there is no, no time limit in which it can be collected.
Thank you. Counselor Kocel.
Um, so I just, I, I just want to clarify. So if a business were to issue an invoice and a client were to pay that invoice and that business was to hold the check, that would be considered revenue that never entered into that business. So are you saying that the unprocessed checks of business licenses are being accounted for as revenue even though we have decided not to, or not decided, we have not cashed the checks or held on to them or not processed the credit cards? Are we considering that revenue even though we haven't cashed those checks? Is that, is, is that accurate of how we can say the $45.1 million is not missing? Because if, in my business, if I collect the money from the client and don't cash the check, I can't count that as revenue.
You'd be correct if you were operating on a cash basis.
Missing.
If, it, well, it depends on the basis of accounting that you're using. If it's a cash basis of accounting that you're using, then you'd be correct. You can't count that as income until you actually cash that check. But if you're utilizing an accrual basis of accounting, I mean, and this is just speaking to your specific.
You're counting it as income, but.
Well, it's money that we've actually received though.
Well, what, so what account is $45.1 million sitting in right now?
There, there is no, I, I, I guess that's what, I, I mean, I really don't know how to relay it further e- except, I mean, saying that there is no $45 million sitting in some account.
They're sitting in envelopes.
That, that's not true.
Okay.
Well, well.
That's not true.
It's in the bank.
It's in the bank.
I, I think we've, we've.
In what account?
In our concentration account.
It seems like mine's already made up. There's $45 million sitting somewhere, but there's not.
I, I think it's, to me anyway, because I, it's, it's clear that there needs to be a powwow between the finance director and the internal auditor to make sure that we can come up with one consolidated definition of what the.
Well, if, if, if it's 45, if $45.1 million is not missing, or then nobody's delinquent.
But that's, but I guess that's, you can uh, the, the internal auditor, based on the fi, and the quick review that I saw, the supplemental materials, the $45 million number that has been listed in the audit report and that you all are speaking to is referencing money that we have already, that we already have in the bank. It's already been deposited in the bank. So it appears to me what the internal auditor has done is taken what we've subsequently moved out of one bucket into another bucket at the end of the year and said that that is money missing. And that is simply not true. Because that number is derived from that journal entry that's referenced in the supplemental materials. But that's money that's already in the bank. I didn't see anywhere in the internal auditor's report that says that there's money out there from delinquents that we have not collected. I haven't seen it. Now, again, I haven't had the pleasure to receive these materials before today.
Okay, I'm a, uh, I see the city attorney's light on and that usually means.
Just like to make a couple more comments, Mayor, and then hopefully we can get to some zoning hearings. Um, when you have faults or fraudulent returns, state law allows the state tax officials to go back any length of time. There's no limit on it if there's a false or fraudulent return. So I don't think we'd have that many of those, but you can certainly go back more than the four years for an open account if there's a false or fraudulent return. And the other point, Counselor Thomas mentioned earlier, the, the five year, do we have the policy on the mandatory leave for folks who are handling cash? Uh, we do. It was adopted about 11 years ago by the council. Uh, you gotta, it's the policy of the government that all employees that work with payroll, purchasing, handling cash, processing payments, processing receivables will be required to take at least one week of consecutive vacation during each leave year. So you do have that policy already on the books, but.
Requirement.
Required, yes.
All right, thank you. Uh, Counselor Davis?
Thanks, Mayor. Mr. City Manager, I wanted to respond to what you said earlier. I know that's the position of the city and that's the position you've taken. You said it in your executive summary that, you know, it's the business uh community's fault. Well.
No, no, I didn't say that.
No, well, let me finish.
Let's be clear.
Let me finish.
Yes.
You're making the assertion that because they have not done their responsibility, that that's why we're in the problem that we're having. But let me just say, failure, there's failure on both sides.
Absolutely.
And two failures, like I said, does not make a right. Okay, so we're trying to get down, like I said, taking these sentences and putting periods out. There's a lot of question marks. I'm sorry if it's painful, but we, we've got to figure this thing out. And, you know, right now, that premise, that, that, we're having a hard time with that because we're so far down the road that it's going to be almost impossible to go back and to collect the money you're talking about. Oh, oh, it is. And, and I think what it's going to become is a complete loss on the books. That's what it's going to become. Your five is, it's, it's five. You're gonna have to report that as a loss. Four's fixing to turn to five. And I think the external auditor is probably most likely aware of some of these things that we're talking about. So I, I, you know, I cannot wait to be able to ask them some questions to kind of get some confirmation. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Counselor Crabbe?
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
City Manager, you said you took action as soon as it, it came to your attention. I'm concerned that it didn't come to your attention for three years. Um, you said, and the finance director said that she'd been asking for help, but she was not provided help until after we asked for this audit. You, you said that you provided help now. Council did not extend the dates for the presentat, you know, for the collection or the notices without a request from administration. I mean, there's been statements made at this table that, that, you know, trying to blame council for extending the dates that they could put in their um renewals. But we would never have, we would never have extended those dates if it hadn't been requested of us by administration. None of us brought that up. It was administration that brought it up. So if that's creating a problem, then tell us and we will, we will take it back. But those are, those are some of my concerns that just listening to what's happening here at this table, these are concerns for me. It, this is reactionary leadership instead of proaction, proaction leadership. And I've said it ever since I've sat in this chair, that we don't seem to be, we seem to be reactive instead of proactive. And I really would like that environment in this government to change.
Well, uh, Ms. Mayor, if I may, of course, I know the finance director has never agreed to wa, has never consented to extending the date um for um business license ever. And I believe you just told me that, that, that last one came from Counselor Kocel. Now, we can go back and look at who the others came from, but it didn't come from staff. Uh, those were, where you hear from people in the community, um, as, as I recall, and and, and then you ask the city attorney or someone to bring something forward to extend. We can certainly go back and do the research.
I did the first one.
You did the first one?
Yep, during COVID.
And I didn't want to say that, but I know that you have advocated.
2020, we were trying to push and delay some of the requirements of payment from the business community is what I was hearing in my office. Uh, so we, we pushed it back.
It, so it was not staff driven. Um, and um so to your other points, you, you know, um, it came to my attention with the referral. I stand by that. And um, and so in organizations as large as ours, you know, more than 3,000 employees, a $334 million budget. Uh, and, you know, you know, things might not get to be. And, and that certainly didn't. And I think, you know, your investigation and all the reports will, will uh verify that. Um, I don't remember the other things, but I'll be happy to respond to, to others as well.
Okay. All right, I think we've, do you have anything else to cover, Ms.?
I think she's got some more.
I have, it's like 25 slides and we're on number eight.
Okay.
So in terms of um closing the receivable, the financial system, again, that would not impact the financial statements because allowance currently reduces the receivable to a net amount. So the allowances for bad debt reduces down the receivable. Um, that's on the books and so that, like I said, is a net amount uh from a financial standpoint. Um, the citation enforcement for especially, um, for uh code and enforcement has not been discontinued. Um, the enforcement of delinquent business licenses, again, is the responsibility of inspections and codes. And um the delinquent list uh was turned over for 20, uh, the prior years on September 13th of 2023. So in terms of some of the uh many conversions that were um referenced, you know, CGI is one of our vendors. Uh, we use their advantage software, which houses our budget, financial and HR payroll system. Um, it is standard industry practices uh for stand, for software updates to um take place. As Ms. McGinn, Ms. McGinnis mentioned, you get those updates all the time on your phone, your cell phones. Uh, we have to do those um for the system. Uh, what's a little different in terms of the, the system updates that we do is that they're done in what we refer to as feature sets. These are, these are really sort of small uh patches, small pushes that are um pushed out uh, a, a couple times throughout the year. And it does take time, you know, to, to test those out. But one of the things that I've heard from the project team in terms of uh testing out these um new feature sets that, that are being pushed uh to us is it occurring in our non-production environment, uh, which sometimes creates an issue. Uh, when we have um something going on in our production environment that we need to test out and that the, the vendor maybe needs to fix. Sometimes due to these feature set pushes or patches, our production environment isn't always this, on the same version as our non-production environment. So we're currently engaged in discussions with them um to possibly uh get, receive a third environment. They're supposed to provide some information to us um before the end of this month in terms of uh what that might, what that may cost. Um, so this should help mitigate some of the frustrations with staff around testing um if we're able to implement that um, that third environment. So in terms of the fixed assets, you know, fixed assets are identified and reviewed on a monthly basis by the accounting department. Uh, but they are not recorded prior to the prior year um audit uh being completed. And that's because the available reporting that we have is not fiscal year specific. So if, say in August, we go to add a bunch of new assets, maybe from uh council agenda in July, um, that's going to skew the reporting that we're able to provide to the external auditors. So once the um audit is complete and the prior fiscal year is closed, all assets are recorded. Um, and they're recorded on a monthly basis continuously up through the uh fiscal year end. And again, that was some re, reference to the lot box process and accounting uh recording, um, you know, uh journal entries and such. But again, we've had conversations with uh Malvin and Jenkins on several occasions and um discussing the year-end process as it relates to the, to the transference of the cash from, uh, recording of cash that we've received out of a balance sheet account into the revenue account. And they reaffirm that process is being recorded correctly through the accounting division. So, um, I'm glad the city attorney made reference to the mandatory leave policy. Um, it is because of the mandatory leave policy that the finance department employees do take their, um, five-day mandatory leave. Um, I'm not aware of any instance where, um, employees have not taken their five-day mandatory leave with the exception of an employee. Um, it was a management decision to allow this employee to forego that leave requirement during the pandemic just due to some of the staffing challenges, um, that was, uh, experienced in that particular division. Um, but, you know, with the additional staffing, most certainly with the additional temporary help that we've received, um, uh, staff will, um, continue to take their required, um, days off. And it wasn't a situation where the employee took no days off. It just wasn't five consecutive days. Which is the policy. I, you're correct. That is the policy.
Excuse, excuse me. Uh, Counselor Begley?
Going back to the fixed assets, I guess I haven't heard of that before because if you, the accounting system would have a date for everything. So if you're, fiscal year in six thirty twenty-three and you have a entry of a fixed asset in July of twenty-four, when you pull the balance sheet or whatever report for six thirty twenty-three, it should exclude any entries stated after that. So I, I, so I, shouldn't you be able to enter those fixed assets after the fiscal year end date and still provide accurate statements as of the audited period to the external auditor?
I would say, um, yes, theoretically. But the reporting that's available to us, um, the baseline, uh, reporting that's available in the system is not fiscal year specific. Um, we will most certainly, and I believe we have engaged the vendor, and I'm not exactly sure why, um, we're not a, we have not been able to get fiscal year specific reporting. Uh, if it's some kind of functionality in the system, I'm not exactly sure. But I'm sure if it was something that could be done, we would have it in place. But we'll certainly revisit this topic with the vendor. Currently, the reports that we have are not fiscal year specific.
But, but regardless of it's fiscal year specific, you would choose a date to run the report as of?
There's no date that you can select. That's why I'm saying it's not fiscal year specific. So it's really more so an inception-to-date report that, that runs in the system.
So we have an accounting system that you can't pull a report based on a specific date?
We do and are able to pull reports based on a particular date, prob- usually the fiscal year, um, fiscal year and period. Um, and in some instances, when it comes to certain ledgers, such as like the, um, check, uh, register, it is down to the date. But for this particular report, it's not fiscal year specific.
So what report is this? Is this a balance sheet report?
It's a, it's a fixed asset listing, um, report.
And on that fixed asset report, I mean, is there not dates where you could, as you export it to Excel, you're saying, okay, this is after six thirty, we exclude those for the reporting purpose?
We could do that, but that's not an actual, that would be, uh, misogynation that we would be providing to the external auditors. It's not a report that's, uh, that we're pulling directly from the, the system. I, I wouldn't want there to be any, um, thought of, uh, compromise or, uh, uh, um, any question to the integrity of the information that we're giving to them. It's not a report from the system.
But they, you could give that to them and say, we're doing this as of six thirty. Like, I've, I've never heard of accounting system that can't provide a report based on a specific date.
Yeah. This particular report is not fiscal year specific. But we'll, we'll bring that up to the vendor.
Yeah, can we, can we?
Yeah.
Yeah, if we can get some screenshots of that, that, that'd be helpful because that's just, that's weird.
It's the truth.
Continue, ma'am.
And so then there was some reference to, uh, succession planning, um, you know, while the department has succession plans for certain positions, other positions may not have viable backups. And of course, you know, this isn't unique to the finance department. Um, this is likely the case for, you know, other key positions throughout other departments in the city government. It, um, as you're aware, it does take time to, and resources to develop talent. I mean, this is why employees that come into, uh, most areas in the finance department aren't able to, to jump in and, and just really, um, provide some assistance without it being, um, sort of menial task, really sort of initially. Uh, because there are some, some processes that we, um, do on a, on a cyclical basis, um, like the budget process being one of those. You don't see the entire process when you come into the, into the door. And so you invest time and energy and you hope that that person will stick around. Um, you know, when it comes time to do that process again next year, um, that's not always the case. You know, obviously succession planning is more than just, you know, picking a replacement. Um, we still have issues, um, you know, with pay. Um, we still have issues with pay. And we have some exempt employees that, you know, work a significant amount of hours a week. And we have some non-exempt employees that may work a significant amount of hours per week. And the non-exempt employee may, are out-earn the exempt employee. And so that, you know, in itself is something that we're obviously dealing with, even though I know we recently implemented the new pay plan. And, you know, it's just challenging when, um, when you're talking about attracting and retaining individuals to assist with some of these key competencies that we have in the department, you know, from a budget, where we have budget constraints that we have to deal with. So in terms of the recommendations, rec- the recommendation of adding an additional, um, full-time buyer to the purchasing division, I don't believe that the level of effort required with the ten ninety-nine, again, ten ninety-nine, not ten ninety-eight process, um, doesn't support that for purchasing, uh, but we could utilize some additional staffing anyway. Again, the department has, uh, been lean, um, like most departments throughout the government, you know, um, and we have just been able to really sort of carry it, um, hold, stay within the lines for such a long time. So when you have things like this in terms of the backlog that's, um, that you see in the revenue division, it really sort of stands out because we've been lean for a while. But we've been able to make do. And we've been good prudent stewards of the, the monies and the budget and the responsibilities that you've bestowed upon us and that the taxpayers, um, expect of us. So as it relates to the recommendation in terms of the accounts payable, uh, participation in the ten ninety-nine process, again, the ten ninety-nine process is a function of the purchasing division and because they are responsible for vendor maintenance and management. Um, in addition, the accounting division, um, they make sure that all of those thousands of W-twos and ten ninety-nines for our active employees and our retirees go out when they're supposed to. Um, and there is some collaboration, some existing collaboration between the accounting division and, uh, the purchasing division. But any additional responsibilities in terms of these vendor tax forms would be, um, burdensome, in my opinion, to the accounting staff. So there was a recommendation in terms of, um, researching the public ERP systems and seeking, um, providers that are not constantly in development. And again, I'll just say that, you know, interval software updates are a stand, standard industry practice, uh, for most software systems because it gives you those new features. It gives you those security enhancements that you need. Um, you know, the city currently has two years left on our, uh, contract with the HR finance budget, um, software vendor. And so obviously we can explore, um, options, um, as we get closer to that time. And I will say that in itself, it would likely not be a heavy lift, I mean, would not be a light lift because this particular system houses, you know, those critical functions. Like I said, HR payroll, the financial system and the budget software. So there was a recommendation to.
Excuse me. Counselor Begley?
Is it a cloud-based system or is it?
It's cloud-based.
So even on the cloud base, they still, there's still significant changes every time they roll out a new version?
I mean, different features, uh, different features that they have within the software, yes.
Yeah.
Uh, Counselor Crabbe?
Thank you. You know that this contract is going to be up in two years. Please do not wait. Start researching now. Be proactive. Thank you.
Absolutely. So there's a recommendation to amend in the W-two document format to include other frequently sought information. You know, the W-two document is a standard IRS form. Uh, we can't amend that. It's only amendable by the IRS. Um, it is my understanding that the staff was, um, expressing a desire to update the employee's paycheck stubs, um, to include gross year, uh, to date totals. Um, that would eliminate the need from, um, payroll for, uh, to contain that information. And again, this would be a significant change to the, uh, current format and there would obviously be an associated cost to facilitate that change. Um, the system that we have in place now, one of the reasons that we have this particular system is that it was supposed, supposedly out the box to us, um, not a lot of customizations. It's a baseline system. And so in terms of us being able to, um, customize, you know, several components of the system to include paycheck stubs, to include some of the reports that we have, you know, there is a cost associated with that. Um, this, like I said, the cost that we've, um, paid out for this particular system, um, and the pricing that we received is what it is because it is, and supposed to be an out-the-box baseline software product that we're using. Um, and so we'll just obviously have to see, you know, what that cost may be in order for us to get, you know, a, a more customizable system. So in terms of the, uh, recommendation that the revenue division results stand at fiscal year end, um, if a liability exists, report it. Um, again, I just am emphatically saying that there is, it is inaccurately stated that there's forty-one million dollars of unprocessed transactions catalogued as CCG lockbox. And as of last week, there are about five hundred, um, accounts currently pending processing, meaning that they are, um, either there's a problem, they exist, or they're in the queue to be processed.